All right. Good morning, everybody. Happy Tuesday. My name is Kirsten Riley. I am the Executive Director of Naturally San Diego. We are the community of CPG and natural products brands here within San Diego. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit. We were started here in 2019 and have grown to over 600 members in just four short years. Two of those years we have to add being COVID years. So our whole purpose, our mission, we exist to serve the natural products entrepreneur, a handful of which you see on your screen today. So we put on events and programming to build this community, educate our members, help them network with one another. We have ongoing programming throughout the whole year. We do about two programs a month. This, you know, including things like this. And in addition, we also have two major events per year. We have a pitch competition in the spring. Mac, can you wave? He was our 2021 pitch land winner. And then we have fall fling right around the corner, which will be on October 12th. So Natural San Diego is supported through sponsorships of local companies who really wish to see this natural products ecosystem thrive here in San Diego. We are part of Naturally Network, which is a national organization and we have six, excuse me, we have nine sister chapters all around the United States. We are here today as part of Connect San Diego's Innovation Week Programming. Connect exists to help innovators and entrepreneurs by providing access to capital, mentors and education. Connect and Natural San Diego had very similar missions. We all wish to see this startup ecosystem thrive. So Connect reached out to San Diego and other partners of theirs to help put on events in conjunction to Innovation Day, Innovation Week. And they've really put together this comprehensive week-long programming. We have put, when they asked, I said, yes, of course, immediately. We have so much innovation in CPG that we're so happy to share with everybody. And there's so much happening right here in San Diego. And it's our job just to shout what's going on from the rooftops. So Connect's big finale will be with Innovation Day will be at Petco Park this Thursday afternoon. They're going to have 3,000 people, 300 booths. It's going to be a big, big event. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Matt Clifford, who is a founding board member of Naturally San Diego. He is going to moderate the session and Matt is going to kick it off and then introduce our panelists.
Awesome. Thank you, Kirsten. Great, as always, everybody. Great to see you. Really excited about today. You know, we have, I want to make this conversational and intimate because there's just some great brands here that I think represent San Diego in such an authentic way. And some of my favorite brands that I've had a pleasure of just interacting with. Some been around for 20 plus years and some, you know, a couple of years. And I think it represents kind of the ecosystem we're building here in San Diego. So before we dive into the panelists and introducing everybody, I just want to dovetail what Kirsten was saying because she did a great job that often when you think of San Diego, we think of military, biotech or healthcare. And Connect definitely as an organization represents a lot of those industries. But initially it's often overlooked. Obviously, we're biased. Is the consumer goods industry that we have here in San Diego? And to say it's thriving would be an understatement. So from a naturally San Diego perspective, we have 500 plus members for organizations that's only two years old. And it is truly a community-led organization from the ground up. The members are the entrepreneurs and operators of these brands. And just to give a idea to set the stage of, if you don't live in this ecosystem of brands that we have operating here in San Diego, I'll just share my screen for a second here so people can get the idea. But you know, these are brands that people buy in the grocery store every day that are in our backyard. You know, from big brands like we have Laura here from Dr. Bronner's Today, which is in an amazing story, an amazing brand that's right manufacturing soap in our backyard here in Escondido. To brand like Perfect Snacks, who a year and a half ago sold to Mondelez right here in downtown San Diego. A brand like Bitchin Foods. These are big scaled, large brands that are manufacturing here in San Diego, that are born here in San Diego. And I think we should all be incredibly proud that we have these awesome brands in our backyard that are staples in the consumer goods industry. But what those awesome big brands do, and Laura will talk about it today, is they actually really help nurture and support the emerging brands, right? And this is what Naturally San Diego magic is. Because in the emerging brand side, we have Mac Veral from, from I Eat My Greens, which is an amazing innovative soup company that he'll talk about. And we also have Emily Griffith from Lil Bucks. And they're both doing great stuff and pushing the needle on what the future of food looks like. So I just want to take a moment and then represent the brands that we have here in San Diego and how great they are. And this is only a sliver, you know, Naturally San Diego has membership to a handful of them, but there's a lot that aren't members yet and it's a growing community. So be proud to be in San Diego, be proud to be part of the natural foods community and excited to dive in today. So the panelists today, we have Mac, Emily and Laura. Would you guys mind just quickly introducing yourself and giving a two second on the companies and so we can dive in? Mac, let's start with you.
All right. Morning, everyone. I'm Mac, founder of I Eat My Greens and we're all about fresh, ready to eat soups. Now I got together with a bunch of chefs and developed recipes to make sure they're delicious. But just beyond the soups tasting really good, we're empowering communities, backing family-owned farms, supporting regenerative agriculture and using upcycled veggies in our soups. All things that we're really proud of. So it's much more in the backend than just having a product on the shelves. And happy to talk more about that today.
Great. Emily, because you're next on my screen here.
Perfect. Yes, I'm Emily. I'm the founder and CEO of Lil Bucks. We're the buckwheat brand. We make crunchy superfood toppings and snacks called Cluster Bucks from sprouted buckwheat, which is a nutrient-dense fruit seed. We source from regenerative organic farmers, mostly in the Midwest. And I started this after kind of on a travel-inspired thing when I was living in Australia and noticed sprouted buckwheat was already a widespread used ingredient there. And after noticing it wasn't a big thing in the States yet and it grows really well on US soil, I decided to launch the brand first at farmers markets in Chicago where I'm from in 2018, but moved out to San Diego in 2020. And since then, that's really when things have taken off. And we're launching our Cluster Bucks product line into Whole Foods National this January.
Great. Laura.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura. I'm the R&amp;D manager at Dr. Bronner's Magic Soaps. We're an organic and fair trade soap company based in Vista where we manufacture soap and other personal care products. The brand has been around for over 75 years and is still family-owned and operated. We're the leading natural soap in North America. And last year, our revenue was 170 million. And we sold over nine million bottles of our 32-ounce liquid Castile soap, which is our top-selling item. My role at the company is to help come out with new products, reformulate existing products and advance sustainable packaging.
Thank you, Laura. Dr. Bronner's is such a, it's magical in its name. And the community here for Naturally San Diego got a chance to tour the facility yesterday in which they make that much soap. And I encourage everybody, we'll do this again. It was an amazing opportunity to see large-scale manufacturing at that size and that shtick happened in San Diego. It's a really cool thing. So one of the first topics I wanted to kick off with today is, you know, CPG is always changing. And for folks that are new to the space, consumer packaged goods is CPG. And we have three brands here that represent very different cycles in the growth of a brand. As Laura said, Dr. Bronner's at 100 million plus. And then Mac and Emily, you know, kind of very much breaking down walls and barriers and creating shelf space and doing the growth side of the brand. So I would love it, Mac, maybe I'll start with you of, you know, you're a couple of years into this journey. And you're doing this in the chilled refrigerated space, right? What has, what have you learned over the last two years that's kind of in hindsight been, well, you didn't know going into it?
I kind of, before this, I started a juice company. So I know, and it's refrigerated. So I prepared. Sorry?
You have some refrigerated experience.
Yes. So that proved to be very, very helpful. Otherwise, I don't think I would have, you know, gone with the fresh cold chain as I did. But still, you know, a lot of, yes, learnings and, you know, the friend, the juice company I started in Mexico. So, you know, different country, different culture, different way of doing things. That was, I guess, the curve, the learning curve for me. And still learning every day about it and how to really control costs and be very mindful of your margins and make sure you have everything under control. And I worked for that for years before actually launching to make sure that everything is in place as far as the supply chain. And it just got worse during COVID. So I'm glad that I, you know, I had a pretty solid and as much as I could supply chain. So I think that was, that was key. It's been key for, for, for me so far.
One of the things I think is fascinating, Mac, about your business is you make an amazing product. And for those that are not familiar, I'll just share my screen of what Mac's product looks like on shelf. Can you talk a bit about the product and the taste versus the positioning? Because this is so striking. If you see this at retail, you'll see how different it is on shelf. Are you able to postmortem that yet, Mac, around success that you've had so far versus like the way it's packaged versus the taste?
Yeah, I mean, packaging is, you know, it's super important, right, in CPG? Both for a convenience side, for image in the shelf. I think those two things have helped a lot, for sure. Yes, I didn't want to be another, you know, can or plastic tub and shelf and the convenience of the little spout, you know, the cap and the pouch, it means a lot. Consumers really appreciate that. I say it's the most portable soup in the market because just, you know, open, close, take it anywhere. Yeah, it's refrigerated, but there's a lot of people taking it camping and to work and you name it. So it's been a big plus for us, for sure. Eye-catching and convenience. So it's worked, it's worked great.
No, that's great. And Emily, on your side, you know, you've pioneered buckwheat in the US. For the first time I've heard of buckwheat was from you. It's striking. What do you think drives this dichotomy between a very popular inert ingredient in a country like Australia and relatively unknown in the US? And how has that journey been for you?
Gosh, well, I definitely would say I've grown up in the CPG industry with Lil Bucks. And I'm very much a learning by doing person. Launched the brand when I was 25 with, you know, Kraft paper bags that didn't even have the flavor labels on them. Because I was like, well, people will be able to tell which ones are chocolate because they'll be the brown flavored seeds, like. So we've come a long way. But it's actually really interesting, just looking at trends in general. I think a lot of really successful CPG products have started from trends that might start in like, you know, Europe and/or Australia. Now we're seeing a huge wave of more, you know, like Southeast Asian foods, certainly Mexican, South Americans. So I think as the US and maybe social media has, I mean, I think that has a big part in it as well, but, and just like our country continuing to become more diverse. People become more open-minded to new ingredients. And I would even say in the past five years, I've really been on the buckwheat pulse. And buckwheat, of course, a lot of people think it's a wheat. Why wouldn't you? Because the word is buckwheat. They made our job hard. But even in the past five years, just the open-mindedness in general to consumers kind of being open-minded to trying this ingredient. Or, you know, more health-conscious, so people are hearing about it a little more versus kind of when I started five years ago, I think people might have been a little more reserved. They're scared to try. It's funny being like, people were scared to try buckwheat, but people were hesitant. Versus now, people are really excited to try new things. So even just in like half a decade, I think that's, that's had a good effect for our business.
Yeah, it's so interesting. Laura, I'm fascinated. You've been at Dr. Bronner's for 11 plus years. You live, eat, breathe soap. How is this soap industry changed over the last 10 years that you've seen from both an innovation perspective, R&amp;D perspective? What are you seeing?
Great question. I've been at Dr. Bronner's for eight years. And I did get my start at Clorox 10 years ago. So I have seen a huge shift since then. When I first started at Clorox, I found out cleaning products were 90% water. And at the time, I had asked my mentor, why don't we just sell the concentrate? And then people can dilute it at home. He looked at me as if I was crazy and was just like, consumers are not going to do that. Now, 10 years later, you walk into Target and they have dilutable cleaners on the shelves from Clorox. Dr. Bronner's has been selling concentrated soap and a concentrated cleaner for, you know, since the start for over 75 years. So I think consumers are very educated now and they really want to feel good about their purchases. That's really helped us out a lot and already having the concentrated cleaner. And to Emily's point, social media has played a huge role. Now consumers have a direct communication line between themselves and the brand. So they can, you know, call out, hey, you guys need to do XYZ and we can respond faster to consumer demands as well as be held accountable.
Yeah, that's, that's so interesting. We were chatting offline before. Can you share with the audience the distinguish between detergent and soap?
Yeah, yeah, sure thing. So a soap is, I mean, our soap is made out of coconut oil and other plant-based oils with potassium hydroxide that's suponifies. So that creates a surfactant. So that just means it's technically surface-active agent. And there's a head portion of it and a tail portion of it. Now, the head portion that, well, the tail portion is attracted to dirt. And then the head portion fills around it and it creates a micelle and then you rinse it off. Unfortunately, with soap, you do get soap scum because the potassium is the head that reacts with calcium and magnesium in your water. So you can use our soap. It's like, great, you might get some soap scum in your shower. You can use vinegar just to easily get that off. Now detergents are very similar to soap, except they have a different head and a different tail. They might, they're not as natural, but they do work in hard water. So you're not going to get soap scum.
And remind me, for my naive knowledge, what percentages of consumer goods we go into a Target? What percent is soap and what percent is detergent that we're putting on our body?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I don't know the exact breakdown. I would say it's probably 90% detergent or higher than that.
That is so shocking to me as a consumer in this space that you, we think we're buying soap. Maybe this, maybe we're just being cute with words here, but we're actually buying detergent for our bodies. This is so fascinating. So you're, one of the things that you guys are leading the charge on, Laura, is is sustainability. And Dr. Bronner's been at the forefront of this for a long time. Can you talk to how packaging is changing in this space? And, you know, Mac, you're, your representation of doing it in a different way. And Emily, you've worked on sustainable packaging. So packaging is so critical here, both from how you win at shelf, but also how we minimize our impact on the environment. So Laura, you have been on the forefront of this. What is going on at Dr. Bronner's right now? And give us the update.
Yeah. In 2019, our customer experience team and our social media team had a bunch of requests for plastic-free suggestions. It had increased five times since the year prior. So this really made us do a deep dive into the plastic crisis. So our top-selling products are all sold in 100% post-consumer recycled PCR PET. And we did a deep dive into recycling and found out that only about 9% of plastic gets recycled in the United States, according to the EPA. The most recycled plastics are PET and HDPE. Those are recycled around 29%. And our bottles and jugs that we sell our soap in are those materials. And they're also made from recycled plastic in the first place. So we are already doing.
Before, because I want to visualize this for the audience too. When you say the most recycled plastic is PET, right? And so is that safe to say like a Kirkland, you know, single-use plastic water bottle is PET?
Yeah, yeah, most water bottles.
And you're saying that is at most at 29% recyclability across. That's amazing. I mean, amazing in a very terrifying and, you know, earth-shattering way.
Yeah. If you have ever have a chance to visit a recycling center, it will blow your mind. Yeah. So we were already doing pretty well, you know, we had the most recycled plastic. We are already using PCR resins for this. But consumers wanted more. They were putting us on blast on social media for using plastic. Retailers were also asking for more. Meanwhile, smaller brands were coming out with soap and aluminum bottles, a molded fiber bottle. We saw a cleaning company come out with cartons, detergent and cartons, and even glass. And glass is not the safest option to have in your shower. So we knew we wanted to have an eco line for those consumers who were asking for it. And we also started to explore refill because that's when someone can really just reuse their same bottle over and over again. And there's no waste there. Then we hired a packaging engineer because we ran into this issue. And she participated in a case study for a life cycle analysis. And that's a methodology where you put a bunch of data about your, in this case, it was packaging materials, like how the material is extracted, made into a package, and then the end of life. So if it ends up in landfill or recycling, takes every single one of those stages and looks at different environmental impacts for each package at each stage. So we did that and looked at eight different attributes. For example, greenhouse gas emissions, water use, mineral use, et cetera. And this showed that the carton was the least environmental impact option compared to, we tested a aluminum bottle, our current PET bottle, a glass container and a paper bottle.
So one of the things that that was just so fascinating about this and sorry to interrupt you, Laura. If everybody is liking this, we can go deeper. Because it is one of those things where like the deeper you dig, the less you feel like you know, right? And I'll just like tease everybody on this, this visual. And this is on Dr. Runner's site. But Laura, walk us through what the outcome is here. Because I think it's a lot, it's counterintuitive to what most people would think around plastic not being the most effective LPA perspective.
Right. Yeah. So the way to read, this is the results from our LPA. And the way to read this is the bigger the space that's enough, that's impact, the smaller the space that's taken up on this graph, that means it's the least environmental impact. So you can see here the carton that was tested. It takes up a small amount of space compared to all the other options. So that means it has like, in basically every category, except maybe freshwater eutrophication, which it's not that bad comparatively, it's smaller in every way.
So I guess, like everything, nuance is important. But when we hear often, you know, plastic is a sin, go in glass, or, you know, glass is highly recyclable. That's looking at it on a single paradigm or a single vector of the recyclability of glass, but not the transportation, the production, the shipping, the everything, right? And obviously, life is more nuanced and contextual. I don't know. My takeaway here is just that it's really hard to have a really, really strong, impassioned, single-minded decision when it comes to a lot of these things that are so complex. And I just appreciate you guys for doing this hard work, right? And publicizing it and just showing it. It's just, it provides a lot more nuance for the conversation. And also great work on the, on the, on the carton.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was a lot of work.
I love it. So Emily and Mac, while we're on the sustainability trend, Emily, you want to, you went down this path a bit, right? I also shared that I went down this path on the, on the stand-up pouches and flexible film a bit harder. What was your journey like?
Yeah, it's funny. You know, especially I think when you're starting a brand and you're, you know, you have all these demands as a consumer and you're like, I'm going to be different than big food or whatever you're going up against. And our big, our biggest impact we're having as a brand is in the regenerative farming space. So like with, on the sourcing side of things, we're crushing that. But I also was like, well, of course, like we should have compostable packaging. How hard could it be? And I remember some early investors saying, don't waste your time on that. Wait till you get bigger and the technology catches up. And I was like, how dare you? I'm going to figure it out. Spend two years. I know a lot about it now, but alas, unsuccessful. We are plastic mutual certified. It's a Band-Aid, which we will say. I think one of the things as a brand, being transparent with the consumers about this journey is the best thing you can do. But, so yeah, what we tried to do was first, I was testing out some compostable things, but logically, this would come as no surprise, like some packaging that composts and home compost isn't going to protect the food that's in it for very long. So you're balancing shelf life and minimizing food waste with, is it worth it to have this compostable package? Pretty funny because after trying to test all of these compostable pouches for over a year, I decided to actually survey our customers on how many people are interested in composting and how many people actually compost. And 100% were interested in it and 1% actually composted. I was, okay, that's something to consider with switching to compostable packaging. Ultimately, the technology wasn't there for us, but then we tried. And we actually put this in a market for like nine months, was recyclable stand-up pouches. So the way they could be recyclable and it was only store recyclable was by using mono-material plastic. You get into this, even like a little granola bag on the shelf usually has some layers of different types of plastic. So by being mono-material, it could be recycled, but you have to bring it to the store, which we said on our bags, but A, as a small brand, trying to get consumers to change their behavior, they're just going to see that little recycle symbol and be like, I'm putting it in my recycling bin and actually stuffing up the recycling process even more. And then with the mono-material plastic, we actually learned when we were shipping our products, doing e-commerce, sometimes our clusters, little granola clusters would actually break through the pouch. You know, you don't want buckwheat clusters all over the place. When the order comes, a bad customer experience, we're having to reship new product, food waste. So it was kind of an ironic journey where we're like, we got to pull these out and just go old-school plastic, pay for a plastic mutual certification. And even a part of our pledge to the plastic mutual certification is that the journey is not over. This isn't just like, to say we're good people, we're still pursuing as sustainable as we can. But yeah, it's kind of, as a consumer, you're like, why not? We'll be compostable. We'll be perfectly sustainable from end to end. And then you get into it and a little harder than it looks.
Idealism versus reality, right?
Yes.
Struggle of an entrepreneur. Mac, I was thinking about your product with Laura's perspective. I imagine actually from an LCA because you can ship your pouches flat. They're not shipped in tubs like normal soup containers, right? So you probably have a lower footprint on the inbound. Any insight there?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, inbound, it's, I can fit so many. And imagine if I use glass, same thing, right? It would be, it would be that crazy use of resources for all the, everything that was shown in the chart. But I was, I didn't, I hadn't had a chance to look at it and it just makes sense. And, and exactly what Emily said, you know, it's, and thank you Emily for doing that work. I've done a little, but, you know, it's, we have a vendetta. I, I've, I've done a little, but uh, you know, it's, we have a vendette right now, which is, you know, recycling, uh, making sure uh, working with a company called Recycleps that uh, our pouches get recycled. If that's very important with, it is with me, but the consumer decides, right? It's about the consumer actually taking action. Um, but we are definitely on the lookout for when we can uh, improve packaging on the sustainability. So we're all in, in this, uh, I feel like uh, we're not like, it's not that we don't care, we're, we care a lot. Um, and it's just a matter of technology catching up and, and consumer behavior, I think.
It's, it's so interesting, you know, we're gonna segue into like the consumer and the behavior. But one, one takeaway for folks that are kind of newer to the space is I feel like every scaled CPG brand is a brand, but also a really sophisticated logistics business, right? Because we are in the penny business here, when we're talking about food manufacturing, the margins, it's a high volume, low margin game. And I think when you get to a certain point, you really start talking about, can I save a penny here and a penny there? Whether that's on freight or on packaging or on trade. And a penny adds up when you're doing millions and millions, millions of units. And so it's a really ironic thing. And, and Mac, I guess I'm struck by that, by some of the innovation you're doing to your supply chain that probably helps. Um, so, so great job on that. I would love to change gears here to the consumer, um, you know. What, and, and you guys, I would just, what consumer insights did you garner in the creation of the brand? And Mac, I guess we'll start with you. Was this a personal uh, solution or was this a consumer insights driven? The consumer wants this and they're not satisfied. What was the origin of I eat my greens?
It's both, um. I'm, you know, from, I've been in CPG for uh, more than ten years. Uh, and I've seen how the evolution of consumers looking for more um, clean ingredients. Of course, uh, real food made from food, uh, which sounds ironic, but yeah, real food. Uh, yeah, uh, but people actually reading the ingredient lists. I think that's, that's, uh, it gets me very happy when people turn around products and read the ingredients. It, it's not as common as you would like it to be, as I would like it to be. But uh, it, it's, it's getting better and better for sure. Um. So that insight, uh, that just, you know, seeing it happen all over um, year by year. And then my personal, of cour- um, need as well of, of, uh, also as, as an athlete, past athlete. Um, and understanding of nutrition and, and what to eat and how does food make me feel? Uh, me and, and everybody, my family and everybody that I see and talk to about food. Um, it's clear to me that, that, you know, a, a soup that clean ingredients, truly fresh. Um, talking to also to the perfect bar guys in San Diego, right? As mentors and they're like, yeah, fresh is a great place to be. Um, and I saw a, a great opportunity um, to make something that I truly believe is uh, an innovation in the market and something that, that would um, actually make people feel and be healthier. Um, you know, eating a lot of vegetables, it's every single doctor, whoever you wanna say. recommends eating more veggies and ninety percent of people don't, right? So you know, what's going on there? Uh, so hopefully I eat my greens, you know, we've changed some of that in a small way and, and that's a big goal. Change, change it in a big way, uh, one soup at a time.
Well, my kids eat greens because of your products, so you know. It's a long, longitudinal study because they're still young, so we'll see how they end up, but hopefully it arcs in the right direction. Um, Emily, how about you? Like, you know, this, this bet on buckwheat is a bold bet, right? Is this a macro bet, like from a health and wellness perspective? Where do you see it from the consumer perspective?
I see buckwheat in every pantry across America. You know, it's like the new quinoa or we're trying to be the Quaker oats of buckwheat. So I think, um, we started in CPG, using it as an ingredient in products on the grocery shelf. But a small part of our business now, but one that's growing is actually using it as an ingredient and selling it directly to um, restaurants or through food service distributors. Actually, um, uh, Good Anya in Antonidas, they're about to launch a menu item with using, we have an everything bagel seasoning. So it's kind of like a cleaned up version of the Trader Joe's, everything but the bagel seasoning. And then it has the crunch from the buckwheat seeds. So, um, that's pretty cool to kind of see. Uh, I could just go all day with the innovation. Um, and all the product ideas we have with buckwheat. Um, one thing I've learned in this journey is, and actually this is funny even seeing here, kind of from right to left is an evolution of the packaging and the messaging we've always been tweaking. Like for me, because we're one of the first, I think the first brand in the States that's focused on buckwheat. It's been such a challenge from a marketing and messaging standpoint, how we communicate this. And I was always trying to do too much in the early days, probably still am. Um, but a good piece of advice I learned from another uh, entrepreneur, CPG entrepreneur was, you know, you're, a, a lot of founders will try to innovate ten steps off the beaten path. You wanna have it all, you wanna have perfectly sustainable innovative packaging and be super healthy and this and that. But really you should innovate one, maybe two steps off the beaten path. Because otherwise the message gets lost um, and diluted with everything else. And then you're not gonna stand out for the one thing you wanna stand out for. So that's been, even I think from when we've, uh, Mac and I have both gone through, trying to have more sustainable packaging and do what you can, but that's not like the main reason for being. It's more our sourcing and the ingredients and the taste that we're going for uh, is like our big differentiator, you could say.
Yeah, well, new packaging looks phenomenal. Can, can you just talk a bit to the layman around how buckwheat on a nutrition uh, perspective stacks up?
Of course I can. Uh, buckwheat is my favorite topic. Um, and the fun fact for the day, besides being horrified by the recycling system, it's uh, buckwheat is actually a fruit seed, not a grain. Um, so it's gluten and grain free. Um, kind of similar to quinoa and its nutrient profile. So like high in protein, six grams of protein and five grams of fiber, asserting actually ten times more antioxidants. One of those antioxidants being rooted, which is really good for heart health, so helping to regulate blood sugar. And so I'm like obsessed with this seed. There's so many great things about it. It's also very uniquely crunchy, so has great uses across the board. And I'm like, when I launched our first banner that we had at a farmer's market was like, it's raw, gluten free, grain free, protein, blah, 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 blah. And again, going back to how can we focus on like one to two key differentiators that are going to resonate with people to grab your product off the shelf? And this has been a five year journey pretty much to get into this, but it's gut friendly. Uh, just because it's something that's making you feel good from end to end. We're like, how can we encompass this by being grain free and gluten free, high in protein? You're getting that satisfaction, the fiber, great for digestion. So we did a ton of messaging studies, both with our consumers and um, outside consumer groups and then AB test, testing live in the marketplace to get to that point. Um, but that's been, you know, I could go on and on about buckwheat itself. But really getting to like, why is the consumer actually gonna buy it?
Well, it feels like you're, you're, you're scratching, you're striking a chord because aren't you have some exciting news on a Whole Foods launch coming up, right? Do you wanna share that?
Yes, so it is really exciting. We're in forty Whole Foods in the Midwest right now. And we're actually launching, we have two SKUs there now and we're launching four SKUs nationally in January.
Huge, congratulations.
Yes, and there'll be one new flavor that we are not sharing yet. Um, that will only be available there at first and it's gonna be regenerative organics certified by the Regenerative Organic Alliance. So that will be, I'm just really excited, I mean, for multiple reasons. But also it's gonna, I think, really put regenerative.
Yeah.
Greenwashing, regenerative, certified, regenerative on nationals, in front of a national audience with a retail partner that is educating their customers on this. So I think it's a great place for us to start with that, but yeah.
It's, it's actually refreshing because it does feel like, for, I mean, for folks that are kind of new in the space, but you know, kind of live in this while, we're having this moment in regenerative agriculture, which it's almost, in my opinion, what I'm seeing, kind of surplanting organic because of, it's almost like the LCA approach. Do you guys have any specific insights there around where the consumer is from any of your brands around regenerative? And is it a consumer driven thing? Is it a retail driven thing? Where are we in that journey?
Well, I'd definitely be interested to hear Laura's perspective as well, because Dr. Browners was one of the founding companies for the Regenerative Organic Alliance and the certification that my brand pursued. Um, but I would say from the consumer perspective, it's still very early. Um, and it's trying to like strike the chord of defining what this is, like. And I don't know, having a unified definition that makes sense to the consumer, but also not overwhelming them. Even regenerative agriculture itself is such a long word, you've already lost them. Um, but I think we're seeing a really like whole, Whole Foods and Thrive Market in particular have been really good retail supporters and really, um, what's our word, like stringent or strict with their compliance around that, which I really appreciate. And then they're doing big efforts to educate their consumers. So I see that, you know, our target audience shops at both those places. So that's the first wave of consumers that are going to be aware of this, driven by the retailer. Um, but yeah.
It's great. Laura, any perspective?
Yeah, I'm not on the marketing team, but from what I understand, we've had to educate consumers. Also adding Jimbo's to that list of retailers, they've been really good at having like infographics on why regenerative is important. And then they like really highlight the regenerative organic products as well. Uh, we did, we did start the certification and you know, co-created that with um, the Rodale Institute and then a university as well. So it was, I think it was more of a moral thing that started and then we're having to bring the consumer along the journey.
Well, I actually think that's a great segue and, and, and by the way, everybody, you know, please chime in with some questions here. Uh, one of the questions Laura, and we talked about this before, is walk us through the thinking behind the launch of the chocolate bar. Um, because it does feel, uh, it wouldn't fit into your normal strategy session around where you go as a brand. Um, and the question was, talk us about chocolates. And by the way, they're delicious. So give us a little framing of the magics, magic chocolate bars that you guys launched.
Yeah, awesome. Great question. Yeah, chocolate, it does seem, I guess, a little random for a soap company to come out with a chocolate bar. Um, we were already producing, um, you know, organic fair trade palm oil in Ghana. And our team, some of you have, have met Gero and Ryan, they're our special operations team. They are in charge of like these, all these raw materials to get organic and fair trade abroad. So they were already uh, in Ghana, working with the farmers. Then they discovered these same farmers are growing cocoa, but it wasn't organic. So they saw an opportunity to get these farmers to convert their farms to um, regenerative organic cocoa. So they started on that journey, but obviously, you know, we needed a customer to sell these to. So we became the customer and developed a chocolate from there. Um, so it's really disrupted the industry because chocolate, you know, has a lot of, a lot of history about ethical and environmental issues. So glad to be at the forefront.
Why is it that the best products like chocolate and coffee have to have the biggest stain?
That's a great question.
Uh, um.
I, I love, say also, like, I think this is something interesting to point out with CPG in particular is that, I think it's a really, I mean, again, I mostly grew up, my career is mostly grown up in CPG. So this is what I hear from outsiders coming into CPG, but that it's such a collaborative industry and really friendly. And lots of brands like, yes, some could be considered competitors, we're all competing for the consumer attention. But everyone is so helpful and like, even with Dr. Bronner's and their work in regenerative and uh, creating that supply chain. We're actually sourcing now from the same coconut oil supplier. Um, that Dr. Browners helped establish, so it's kind of interesting. There's a lot of, there's a lot more connections than you would ever imagine.
Well, you know, it's interesting, Emily, on that is from my experience, I think, I don't think it's this simple, but there are brands that do things out of mission and morality. And they move the entire market because of this deep seated belief, right? And then there are brands that look at IRI Nielsen and Spence data and say, the consumer wants this, I'm gonna give it to them, right? And what you guys are doing with the chocolate bar is not the consumers wanting, you know, a fair trade organic, like all these, you know, regen- like, they're not there yet, but you're saying with our weight and our might, we will bring it to the forefront and get them there, right? And it's a very, I love that. I love that about our industry. And I don't want to demonize either, like, you know, the one responding to the consumer where they are. You know, that's fine as well, but I think you gotta have both poles. So it's a, it's a, and I, I appreciate Dr. Bronner's and Emily and Mac, you guys are doing this like you're, this is what emerging brands do is they, they move the market forward with their, their deep seated beliefs and morals and values. And I think that's awesome and it's commendable. Um, so we have a couple of questions here. Um, one, Mac, I'm gonna push to you. Chuck asked a question around uh, manufacturing. You know, as I said, I think a lot of these businesses are logistics businesses and you manufacture in Mexico, which I think is a completely overlooked opportunity. Can you talk to us about that and how that's been a strength or a weakness and an opportunity?
Yes, sure. Um. I mean, I see a strength, strength, um. Born and raised in Mexico City, so you know, I'm, I'm local there. Um, but it always made sense uh, with the great, um, you know, vegetables and, and land uh, there and, and you know, friends and connections that I have, uh, and building those relationships um, for what we're working on, you know, the organic, regenerative and upcycled and um, and the, the, that's what keeps me really excited nowadays in that part. Um, and then, you know, when it comes to freight, um, and doing business in Mexico and, and the US, I mean, it's, it's only growing, you know, business and relationship within the US and Mexico, it's only growing. Uh, especially with the issues, uh, the US has with Asia, China. So it's, it's, you know, there's so much products coming in and out of Mexico and the US. Um, Texas is the place where, I don't know the stats, but I'm gonna guess eighty percent of commerce goes through Texas. Um, so there's a lot of good infrastructure, uh, you know, the, the trade agreements. Uh, so you know, as far as, as far as you have the right um, vendors and, and you research it and, and once, once you start, once I did the, the whole supply chain, it works. Then it's easy, it's easy to, to bring products to the US from Mexico, um. And you know, there's big advantages on, on, yes, on costs and depending on your product, depending on what you're trying to achieve. But, but there's big advantages of, of tuning in Mexico, um. So it's been a strength for us, for sure. I'm very happy with, with that decision. And um, so you know, uh, helping the communities that are uh, in the production line and in, in the, in the, the farmers. So I have a great relationship with them. It's um, it's country I was born and um, but uh, so for me, it's been, it's been great to, to be able to accomplish that and to, and to show that things have been done well anywhere in the world. And, and it's all about a great product with a, with a mission uh, behind it.
Mac, I'm not sure if you can see my screen, but I saw this chart that the first time in a long, since two thousand and three, we're importing more from Mexico than China now.
There we go.
Which is shocking. I mean, I mean, it's not shocking because the Mexico's, it's been a very steady, it's just the China's fallen off a cliff, but amazing. And it, and it makes more sense. And I think we're gonna see a lot more of that.
Yeah, big opportunities there for sure.
For sure, for sure. Um, okay, we have one more question here, um. Does anybody have any traction around, oh, okay, so Brad, I think your question is around university reported impact metrics, right? So I guess this would be like, how are all these companies? university reported impact metrics, right? So I guess this would be like, how are all these companies recording their impact, right? Um. Is is that the question you're, you can type in if you want some clarity. But I think Brad's question is around like, you know, maybe B Corp, are there universally measured? Um. Ah. Okay, yeah. So there's other universally measured like silos for reporting how these companies are doing. At least from my experience, but I can say that it's kind of all over the board. Every brand's choosing their own kind of steel man and their own metric. I do think B Corp probably does a decent job at this of trying to, you know, you know, um, centralize all that, but panelists, do you guys have any? I guess, how do you choose what metrics you measure and where do you report them is probably the question.
Gosh, yeah, that's I think it's across the board because even in like the world of regenerative, it's like, do you get certified? Which certification do you get? Some brands have come up with their own entire systems for measuring it themselves and reporting it. So and every business is so unique in some ways, like we all have so many unique, especially some multi ingredient products, all these unique inputs um and supply chains and where it's being transported. Uh, so we aren't at the point where we've like published an annual report yet. I've seen some emerging brands do that. And I think it's really cool. Uh, it's more just been based on the brand and values of authenticity and transparency, but that's something obviously we would like to do is eventually actually do that reporting. And then for now, we rely, I think it's why it's really helpful for us to rely on certain certifications that already have things in place. I would agree that probably B Corp, which we aren't B Corp certified, but uh, a lot of admin, that's probably one of the more, and I see a lot of one percent for the planet as well. But I don't know, we haven't done that either.
Yeah.
Yeah, we use a lot of certifications at Dr. Bronner's. Organic being one of them, non-GMO, you know, gluten free, Leaping Bunny is the the vegan one. Um, and then also we do a annual report and it it is different from company to company, but I would say like your your greenhouse gas emissions, you know, there's scope one, two, and three, those are pretty well, well defined. Um, and then energy use, you can just do that from your bills, water use, et cetera.
Yeah. That's, that's great. And, you know, I would check out, I mean, Dr. Bonner's has a great annual report, uh, and Emily and Mac, you guys are completely right, you know. It, you want to do all this well as good, but then at some time you have to have the administrative staff to be able to report and track. And so like, in the beginning, it's like it's straight morals and values and just do the right thing. And then at some point you have team to help quantify it and track it and measure it. Um. Everybody, I just want to say thank you. Can we just give a good, you know, digital round of applause to the panelists, to Mac, Emily and Laura for, you know, for being here with us today and you guys are just really amazing. Uh, you guys have built amazing brands and you're a part of amazing companies and you know, we appreciate so much you being in the San Diego ecosystem. Uh, I I can't thank everybody here enough for participating. I do, I just want to share my screen one more time and just again, if you see these brands here in San Diego, buy them, they're local, they make their products here. We have an amazing ecosystem. If you want to be involved in actually San Diego, just check us out online. We're hosting events uh weekly, if not monthly. We have a lot of stuff going on. It is a vibrant, dynamic community and we are all incredibly proud of the consumer packaged goods ecosystem in San Diego here. And we're very unique based on the cross border and also the big brands that we have going on here. So I encourage everybody to get involved. If you're really interested in this, there's, there's plenty of uh of ways to get involved. And also just thank you to Connect. Uh, I say this is Innovation, Innovation Days on Thursday. So anybody, if you're interested, go down to that. And anybody that came through here via Connect, we appreciate you chiming in and listening to, um, you know, a kind of a deep dive on CPG and uh, our panelists did not disappoint with their perspectives and their brands here. So we appreciate you all and thank you, everybody for being here and have a great, have a great day and we'll see you soon.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Bye.